Join us in place, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Tom. Back on another fine afternoon. Taking it down to school and everybody's.
Air conditioning is working.
I wasn't gonna say that, but did they knock on? Did you have a motion in to approve the minutes of the August sixteenth, two thousand sixteen? Do you have any?
Certainly.
My second.
Uh, Mr. Wilkinson and this man. Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Alright, okay. I don't suppose someone signed in? Have they? Bill? No one signed in?
Uh, I hope so.
Alright, we'll go to the presentations and first we have Rod Cummins, transportation. Okay, Mr. Cummins?
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Um, just like in the past, one of the things I like to do, uh, I think it's important to create, and I wanted to tell you about the finances for now, where we stand right now in a five-year comparison, where we're over the last five years at this particular time. So far this year, we've spent, uh, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars, uh, which is, does not include salaries. Last year, fifteen, we, at this time, we had one thousand, or one million, three hundred and six thousand. In fourteen, uh, we had one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand. And then in thirteen, we had one million, one hundred and eighty-one. And then in twelve, it was one million, three hundred and seven. So as you can see, we've, uh, trying to do everything that we can to keep our, uh, costs down. Seems to be paying off at this time, and I still think there's things that we can continue to do to, uh, to keep that number down. Of course, uh, as you know, accidents and, uh, unforeseen things always kind of jump up and get you, but I'm pleased with the way it's been so far. Also, if you remember, I want to talk about new buses and my thoughts on that. If you remember last year, we went into a lease agreement, uh, to lease purchase eleven buses, which obligates us about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year for payment up until, um, six sixteen of twenty twenty. So it kind of makes sense for me, and I'll explain why in just a second, for us to, uh, maybe wait until next year to purchase buses. With the new money that we had coming in from the state this year, uh, it was three hundred and forty-three thousand. Set aside for that. We have an account, uh, and some money available to us, which had a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which makes a grand total of, uh, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, round about. If we take our two hundred and twenty-two thousand out for our loan payment this year, it leaves us with two fifty-one. Now, to me, it makes a whole lot more sense for us to save that money until next year when we get the new money coming in from the state. Because as you know, with the economy the way that it is and finances the way that it is, that would ensure that we will be able to make that payment next year. And any additional money that we had over that two hundred and twenty-two thousand we could use for new bus purchases next year. Uh, so I, I just think it makes sense for us to be fiscal, have enough money saved aside, uh, that we can make that payment at least one year in advance so that we don't get caught, uh, with a big payment and not have nothing to do with. So far, we're doing pretty good with our, our, our repairs. We had an inspection, uh, last week. Had eight bus, excuse me, had eight buses that were inspected. Two of them were red-tagged and put out of service for repairs that we've already made. We had plans to go to Boone County the following day with, uh, one of those buses to have it put back in, but the inspector was, had, had some personal issues and wasn't able to do it then, and I think, uh, it may be back, but we, we went to, uh, Elview today with one of the buses to get it, uh, put back on the road. I can foresee us having problems down the road, um, as far as being able to keep up with our PNs and, and keeping up with the work that we have coming in. But, you know, we'll do the best that we can and try to move along. That's pretty much what I wanted to give you at this time. Got any questions about anything?
How many spare buses do we have?
Uh, I got about eight to ten. Uh, I've got, uh, I got six that's sitting out there that we don't have any intention of putting back on the road. Costs too much money to fix them, they're too old. Actually, one of them's sitting out there, we had a motor blow up in a bus, uh, so we're taking that motor out, uh, of one of these and going to put it in that one. So it kind of makes sense in some ways to kind of hold on to them things a little bit longer in case we need to steal some parts. Because these buses that we have, uh, you know, if you put them online and sell them right now, you probably won't get a whole lot out of them because, you know, they're big trouble.
And then that engine that you're swapping over?
Same, yeah.
What cost do you want to buy?
Uh, probably, we're talking, probably talking about nine or ten thousand times it's put in from heritage or somewhere like that. And I saw the price, I, I, I go home to it, I, I think we were swapping it out for about around two or a little bit less.
And what have we been getting online out of our buses in bus auctions?
Yeah.
Thousands of a bus or less?
Yeah, a little bit more, some of them, it just depends.
But?
If I can steal some parts off of them in the meantime, that saves money, too.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, so long as, as one or more of those buses provide suitable cannibalization parts.
Yeah.
You've just saved probably what we profit on selling all six of them in one engine swap. So I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to make a junk pile out there, but, you know, if we keep, you know, we'll buy that there and it's not the one, then we can look and sell them online or look off or whatever, decide to.
What do you, I'm sorry, what's the average cost of a, a school bus and new bus?
New one, uh, right at eighty-eight, ninety thousand. And I've given up a price, a special needs bus, of course, you know, it has to have every issue, it has to have the lift and all that, and it was a hundred and nine, maybe.
I just, given the amount you've given us, just thinking how many buses we can potentially?
I, I think the ones we leased were all like eighty-eight, something.
And you feel like the bus fleet, I mean, I, I, I'm in favor of saving that money for a rainy day, so long as you feel like the bus fleet as it is and as you see it over the next year is sufficient to meet our needs and sounds like with the spares you have and things that, that you're pretty confident it will?
As, as long as we can keep up on our repairs, yeah. And I, I don't know, I like to say we were smart, but we were lucky, uh, in that we leased them when we did because of the way that the money's been going. It kind of front-loaded us, if you will, with eleven new buses, uh, you know, obviously the newer bus, the, the less problems you're gonna have with, the less, uh, cost that we have to keep them on the road. So I feel like we stepped into it there. And I think it's something that down the road somewhere, we look at maybe doing again. We gotta kind of play it day by day and see what the state does as far as their money coming to us for buses. And that's, you know, and that's why I think it's important for us to say, uh, you know, I have been told long before I was here, until it was a year, way back when, when the state didn't give any money. Since I've been here two years, I know they cut the amount of money that we had. What happens next year, if they say, well, we're not giving them money, then we're gonna come up with two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars somewhere. And I would rather that it come out of ours than to come out of the, uh, the educational side of the benefits kids.
Are these spares ready to go on the road, like, what do you do tomorrow?
Yeah, I got, I got, like I said, I got about six that can go out on the road anytime. I got a couple, but, you know. They've been used.
Okay, uh, next we have Greg Gosman. Greg's gonna talk to us about maintenance, facilities update, who knows what else? Good to have you, Mr. Gosman.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity that I've been given working at maintenance. We've made a lot of changes, a lot of things we're bringing about, and I think changes is good. Everything's becoming positive and, uh, some of the things I want to talk about, I'll show you some of the good things, and then we're gonna talk about some of the not so good things that I've, I've noticed since coming on board and, uh, doing, uh, assessment of different schools, so. First thing is that we do have the chiller running now. We do have a high school that's a chill water tester around forty-two degrees now. We're able to cool and, and work on the building. Dehumidifying the building now, we're about, I'll show you some information on that here in a minute. We're at about, uh, ninety-eight to a hundred percent on humidity. We did have some issues, I did purchase, I purchased eleven dehumidifiers and put throughout the building that kind of cut down, uh, the humidity in the building. We're not nearly as bad in shape as some of the schools in Hall County with their issues they're having, so it worked out pretty good. Now, Mr. Mickip had asked, uh, when we started this, he had talked to, uh, asked me, asked our contractor that was installing the chiller, if they would work till dark. And he's even offered after dark to hold a flashlight. They, they committed to working till dark, so they worked, uh, they worked quite a bit for, for us extra over and beyond, and, uh, so I sent Mr. Lancaster an email back because we discussed that there'll be a difference in the cost, and this is his reply. This is Greg, I appreciate the opportunity and I feel bad about the past experiences that you've had. I will not charge you any extra for the job, just keep us in mind for any future HVAC work. And they went, they went an extra mile, so please feel bad.
I'm gonna, still kind of, kind of turn around here to consider the start.
This is just kind of like a update what I've done since, since I come on board in July first, some things that we've done throughout the summer, and up to date, and what we're doing on it now. This is some of the jobs that we completed this summer, so we worked extensively on, um, the Duval sidewalk project was completed, completely replaced it, and we added sidewalk lights, uh, with a, uh, actual timer arms where we can turn them on and off according to the time change we need that. We went in and drilled bathrooms up there, we replaced all this, uh, the tile, put all the new ceramic tile. Uh, we also added hand dryers, electric hand dryers, they before had that house dispensers. Uh, we removed the office entrance window, uh, it had like three outside windows, we removed that. And we removed that, we, we made a nice, uh, opening, uh, where somebody comes in the main office, it looks very nice, so. So we removed that, and then we went to the bathroom, uh, removed the old tile, uh, in the kitchen bathroom, it was pretty bad sex, so we removed that and replaced all that. Uh, we repaired the outside drop weight with concrete, some low areas that had sunk down over the years, and then we moved on to some midway painting. Hamlin, we're, we've started repairing a lot of these air handlers, a lot of the HVAC stuff that, uh, normally we were contracting out. So what my thought is that we need to know how to fix this, so that's one of the things we start to take on is we're gonna be doing more in-house and, and quit subbing out so much of this. Once we learn how to do this, it may take us, but once we learn how to do it, we're gonna be in better shape to take care of our equipment. I think if you know what your equipment is, then you can, you can take care of it. Ranger, we worked at Ranger, they had an outbuilding, really nice outbuilding. One of the problems there, they were having with Ranger is they, they have stories, and, got to look at the building and we, we figured out a way, we, there's a big concern there about taking the back wall out too much, because if you take out too much, then we'd have a slip come in, and we didn't want a slip to come in. So we made some, um, adjustments on the top and put some tile in and paint, get the water away from it, and we sealed the inside of it and got it, uh, sealed off. Harts, we installed the slide, I guess it'd been laying over here a couple of years, so we got that all installed, and then we installed two new sets of football bleachers at Harts, uh, also. There's some area at Harts that had some low areas, we were able to fill, fill in and repair those low areas. Gravel to the new parking area, and again, Hart repaired rooftop handler, had some power, uh, some transformer bones, and I worked with, uh, some of our techs and I was able to show them and get them in, in a mode where they can repair these now, troubleshoot and repair. So that's, that's one of the big things I wanted to do. We've done painting at Ranger, uh, got it painted and, uh, all the railing around Ranger looks really nice now, before it was really bad looking. Hamlin, we've done some painting, Hamlin bathrooms and some other things we've done there. Ranger, we done, we had to remove a tree that was in the back by the playground by the sewer plant, and we had to do, repair the fence, somebody tore the fence out there, so we repaired the fence to block that for a safety issue from the railroad tracks for the kids. Lions Club over here, we finished, uh, we put in a new metal roof on the press box area, so we put a new metal roof in there and got that completed. Uh, if you notice anybody in Hamlin, we went on and we had the lights installed, I installed the lights, uh, the flashing lights at Hamlin, now we have the flashing light in the crosswalk area to make it a little safer for our students. We've developed, we developed a plan for our air handlers. Air handlers are a big, uh, big demand when you get into schools, if air handlers aren't running, we can have all the chill water in the world, but we're not gonna get the rooms cold. So you have to keep them breezed and keep the filters changed, so every, every school now has a book, I should have brought one, Apollo does, has a book, and inside the book it has information of when the filter's been changed and what we've done to them, the number of belts, size of filters and those type of things where we can, uh, keep them up to date. Tickle window, we went back to Duval and we put in a nice glass tickle window, and it has the opening where you can put the, uh, clipboard out to sign in and out, and that was to keep the air and the heat in there and put, like, where it was really open, there was an issue, I thought, that would let out a lot of heat and air and you'd have issues with keeping it cool. Tennis courts, we've been working with Ms. Hager on the tennis courts, you know, the new tennis court. We've done some drainage around the new court, and then, uh, the sealant should be in this week, should be in today, actually, to where we conceal, and I talked to, um, um, Mr. Williamson, uh, he's putting in the fence, talked to him today, uh, and he's moving on with that, and what we're gonna be doing with that is, we as, we as being the board, we're gonna put the post in, pour the concrete, and then he will install the fence, and then she's gonna clean the, with her group of, uh, people that are gonna be cleaning it and resurfacing it with the proper paint and the proper design and then repainting everything. Gond Valley, the asbestos, the, what they refer to as the cathedral, it's been removed as far as the asbestos, uh, has been turned over to the buyer, and the buyer's in the process of, uh, removing everything that he wants out of, and then he's gonna demolish that cathedral, which will be a huge, uh, make the school look a whole lot better. We've done some training on school dude, school dude is a way that we get our work orders, a way that we're doing supplies, uh, one of the big things I want, I wanted to do when I came in and I talked about it to everyone, is that we need to have a way to manage our supplies, where are they going? So with the school dude training, with the custodians, mainly, custodians now are trained to where no more coming over to the warehouse and just putting whatever you need in your truck, we're going into a barcoding type system. Right now, it's in school dude, any product that they need, they have to go to school dude, and they locate the product and they order it, and then we deliver it to them when we make deliveries. So that's a way of keeping, uh, check on where our supplies are going and making it a little bit more convenient for everybody. One of the projects I didn't get completed, uh, just so.
You had an item on the other page that addressed a warehouse rack system installed?
Yes, uh, like, it's done, uh, I'd like you to come over and look at it, we put a rack system all the way around the warehouse, we got everything stocked in it and in the process of starting to code everything. It's really nice.
I thought it might tie in, you're talking about the barcoding and everything, that's one of the.
So that's, we had, we have that all completed and it's, uh, made it really nice. This is the one project that I, I was, uh, that I, I did not complete, that was on my agenda to, to try and get completed. If you've noticed outside by the, the side on the waiting room side, what we call the waiting room side of this building, uh, we've got a lot of cars that have damaged the building, and especially concern to me is up where the preschool playground, inside playground is at, they, it's been smashed in pretty bad, and, uh, I just, I, I got all the pipe in, I've got all the metal in, that's on our project, that's on the top list, get our project out of that. What we're gonna do is put, uh, metal barriers around each parking place and, uh, then repair the metal. Thing about this metal, uh, trying to find somebody that ma- manufactures metal, uh, the guy that, uh, we finally found that duplicated it, we sent a piece off to him, and they were able to duplicate all the, all the designs in the metal. The building was back in nineteen fifty-four, they no longer make the metal for this building, so duplicated. Now, these are some, that's the good stuff. So these are some of the, kind of glare there, some of, uh, some of what I would recommend as far as our MIP projects, the major improvement project. We've got some serious issues with, uh, the Duval sewer plant. We got serious issue with the Midway sewer plant. We got a ton of issues with roofs. I don't go over all this, Gond Valley, I've listed most of these, and I'll talk about each one of them as we go through them. I, I talked to SBA yesterday, um, and, uh, their thoughts were, and Mr. Mickip and I have discussed this, is that we were understanding that they're gonna come in with a three percent beyond the roofs where we match it with a three percent honey. They put it out there and then all of a sudden, they thought, they thought there was no need, SBA, so, you know. So when they put it out there, now they're saying that there's too many people needing roofs. It's a school, you have to replace them. So they, they don't know for sure now whether they're gonna accept roof projects now, so.
Now, let me interject, now that, and that, that would be, um, that four million dollars that would be available next June, you know, by, first of April, we would submit whatever our project or projects would be, that we would combine, uh, but, uh, there is some understanding, I've talked to Mr. Ashley as well, the school building authority, is they may open that money up this year to roofing projects, and they've never done that before. So, you know, we've had this conversation after what happened this past June when we were unsuccessful in our bid to get money for the project that was Hamlin, that along the way, we realized that, um, you know, that they were supporting activities that related to replacing HVAC or sewer treatment plants, so those are, those are options, those are areas we'll look at as well as if they open up the money, the funds for roofing projects, but just want you to know that that, that deadline for us to submit an MIP is in April, it's like April that we're ordered for next year. We've got some time on that. We have time to, uh, look at it.
No, I'm, I'm gonna show you some pictures, and these are gonna be some pictures of sewer plants, okay? So we're looking at sewer plants, I want you to know what we're gonna be looking at. This is the estimate, just, I don't know if you can see that deal, maybe you can read it off, or it's, I've got the roll glasses on. The Duval sewer plant, what would cost right now to replace that sewer plant? You're looking at five hundred and, what is it, five hundred? Sixty-three thousand dollars. That's just for the one sewer plant at Duval. Just to show you, go to the next slide, please. Can't see this really well, I've got pictures in my book, but two I can pass around to you, but if you, this wall right in here, there's a wall in here that's, it's a separator from the plant to the rest of, you have three sections that this sewage has to go through before it can go out into the, uh, leak pad that's out there. The wall is, it bodes so bad that Kimron, which is the company that we use to manage our sewer plants, they're hoping we can make it through the year. It's that back. It's the wall right in here, the next one. Alright, right here, you see the wall here? This is the wall, it should be a straight wall across it, it bowed right here, and the beam is totally gone here. That, he said it's that wall, what we've been told is that the wall gives way, that's it. That's, we'll be at a point where we, uh, school, you can't function without a sewer plant. It's sure a little bit more of the wall, the deterioration of that wall. I was up there in the summer looking at that. I got this one a little bit closer, I don't know if you can see it here, but I, right in here, this main beam is just about all the way into, right in the area here. This is the Midway sewer plant, this is the Midway. So the Midway is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's the estimate on the Midway sewer plant. And also, it's a little smaller sewer plant, um, also, the walls, the walls are coming in on it also, and then the outside walls are coming in. You see here, you see the bow here in this wall here, it's, it's really in bad shape. Actually, it looks thinner as far as the metal when I look at it than the one from the Duval. I don't know, right in here, you can see it, and then the frame is given away, they have to tie up the piping because there's no frame to hold the piping anymore. And it's this wall here that bodes real bad, too. All this is all rusted out, there's nothing here. The whole plant on this one, it's all rusting down really bad, and I, I'm a, it's, if you pin up to the Midway, they're on the backside, there's a lot of flooding that goes on this, this backside. I'm not sure if we've got the flooding in there or not, if we did, we, I believe, they told them all the problems. I don't think you can see this really well, I tied the frame all up in here. Just to tell you, this is getting into our roofing. So that was on our sewer plants, issued sewer plant, please. To me, those are two top priorities that we need to look at, is our sewer plant. Ultimately, the sewer plant will shut our schools down. What we're looking at here, these are our roofs. If you look at the roofs at Hamlin Elementary, nineteen ninety-four, if you look at Midway, nineteen ninety-six, ninety-eight, ninety-four, these are when our roofs were last replaced. I couldn't even find Gond Valley. I found an estimate for Gond Valley roof, uh, back in eighty-four to replace the roof, but there's not even a warranty on it now, but this Gond Valley is a gym, nineteen ninety-four. Here's a big problem, all of our gyms, up into the gym, we started refinishing some of the gym floors with some new product, we tried out at Hamlin, so we're starting to hit that, but the problem with our gyms, our floor is pooping, is doing this. And, and a lot of that is where we sanded it so much, we've old sanded it so much over the years, the tongue and groove is really thin, so it's starting to come up with this. We, I would not recommend, you're looking at, most investments in a gym floor is around a hundred thousand dollars. If we replace the gym floor and then we get a roof leak, we just run that gym floor. There's really no sense in replacing gym floor till we, we get the roof issue. Now, I was told by some of the principals, there's a bit, there's a really bad place at Hamlin, there's a bad place at, uh, Gond Valley, Duval, all of them, that even the officials are questioning the, the safety of our floor, because where it cools up, things like that. Those are issues that we need to look at, is on our floors. This is the Hamlin roof, we just, we've been, we've been really hammered since school started with roof leaks. Right before school started, it was real dry, nice and hot, we didn't have a lot of rain, but once the rain started, we noticed we had a lot of roof leakings. And this is Hamlin roof, we had to make metal to put in this roof. And where this roof is located is, um, not the actual, uh, Hamlin Elementary, it's not the actual school, but it's the metal part, metal building part, it's the newer section and the multipurpose room, where we're having a lot of issues here. And you look, this old, this roof, the, the way that this metal roof is made, they don't even make it like that anymore. Every time, every place, it, it went like maybe every twelve feet, you got another piece twelve feet, most all roofing now and it's continuing. What they've done here, they put a, uh, there's a seam that goes in here, and every one of those, we've had to address. This one is the rusting out really bad, issue right here. This area here, we have holes in it, and we tried to repair it, and then we went and got some special, um, silicone, uh, rubber silicone, and we covered all this area to try to repair it. Again, this is another section that we had to replace the metal in, in that roof, we're trying to stop the leak. This is Ranger, this is what we're looking at Ranger roof. We, we tried to fix all this, this is a, uh, I don't know what it was originally, there are different parts of Ranger roof that is really crazy when you have on that stuff. I don't know whether they've had skylights here or what they have, it's just all leaking really bad in this area here, so we, we got, we got metal, we tried to repair and replace most of it, we could. I don't even know what kind of roof you would call this. I, I, I initially looked at it, I thought it was a park, it looked like somebody just taking a park and straight out of the roof. We're having issues with that leaking, it's not even down on the side. And the, the rubber and the, uh, and the pavement for the, uh, gravel is on that other side. So again, you have to see the areas of that, be better prepared. This is Midway, and Midway, uh, had a lot of issues leaking against the walls, and, we've replaced two sil-. This is Midway and Midway had a lot of issues, leaking against the wall and we've replaced two ceilings in the hallway towards what we call the B room. Ceilings have come down completely because of water. We've had to do that a couple of times already. The rubber itself is deteriorating. There's places in the rubber that, that just, that just deteriorating, it's coming apart. And these two places over here and we, I don't know how, we keep trying to get it running in behind the wall and running over here. When you get a roof leak, it's really hard to find exactly where it's leaking at, especially when you've got flat roofs. Duval, this Duval roof, it, it's in bad shape. Underneath the roof, you have a two-inch insulated panels that are, that are laid down before you actually put the roof on. When we walk on that roof, the panels are flipping up in the air. You step on it and you feel like you're going all the way down. The seams here, all the seams, the rubber, the rubber's all falling apart on the roof. We've done it several times, trying to repair that also. So, that's, that was the bad, I guess you'd say, that's the things that I think we need the SBA's help in.
So, what is, I'll measure us, do you have an estimate cost per?
I have Harris Roofing going around right now, inspecting, I'm going to give us estimates on it. Once I get all that, I'll make sure we have talks about it.
And I'd ask Ray earlier this week to provide me with an update on how much money we have in capital improvements. And right now, after the chiller work and insulation over at the high school, we have approximately $475,000 is what we're having right now. You said the one, the one sewer treatment plant, Duval, was $500,000, right, or something?
Is that a lot higher than what we were talking before for the sewer plants that's here?
Excellent.
It's, it's, I mean, I, the SBA, I think has to step up here a little bit to help us. I mean, it's just one of the things. I'll finish up with some updates and concerns, some things that I was, what we went over. I, I have talked with Mr. Cook and this cook about, we, we developed a field for them down below by the pond to use for the practice. They are using it. They had us referring where the field is still a little rough and instruments hitting the food mouth and busting the mouth. There's one area that if it's not wide enough, we're going to go back and we'll reassess that area and see if we can bring some dirt over and make it wide enough.
Are you going to address also the concern of the other about whether uneven areas are causing potential danger?
Yeah, that's what, they're not using the instrument, they just march down there because they said they step in a hole.
So, that's, we've never been a, or apprised of that, I guess, a couple of years ago, you know, we worked out there and you'd never heard anything different. One of their boosters came about a year or so ago and thanked us for doing it. But we were, I mean, I've heard since then, through the grapevine, that there are issues. But no one is, they've never told us that they had a problem.
Right, I went and met with them this summer when they were over. I went and I asked them, I said, you know, I want to know, are you using a field? How do you like your field? And then that's when she said they were, they were using it and her and Dave were both, they were using it. But the only thing was there were some low places that they, they'd step in a hole. And I said, well, I would meet with you once we get school started and we'll go down there and see if there's some pops or maybe we could fill something in.
So, you're going to try to address that? Let me ask you, did any issue about a, a drain being necessary there, did that ever come up?
Well, she didn't say, but they didn't actually mention a drain, they just talked about that one area up by the area that wasn't wide enough. That's the area that I think she was referring to not being wide enough. And that's why I told her, I'll come over and we'll meet and we'll go down there and you'll show me the issue that you actually have.
She's going to work with it, she went to, I'll never put that.
We actually have a piece of equipment now, we can go down there and move any dirt they want.
Sounds good.
Sidewalk issues, I talked with Mr. Ferguson about the emergency sidewalk at the high school, deal with issues with the busted concrete, cracked concrete. When I talked to Mr. Ferguson, he said he's not today able to get back in contact with the contractor. He thinks possibly they're filing bankruptcy or they're going to file bankruptcy.
Then he sent me an email late last week telling me that this company had gone out of business.
Well, I told him, I told y'all that a year ago that they filed bankruptcy, you know?
So, he was, they were able to confirm that? How many times were you talking to?
My, my concern with this is when does our warranty run out? When does our warranty run out on, that's something you need to explore.
How do you enforce a warranty when the company's out of business? I mean, what was the, that project should have been bonded initially?
I agree, it should, we should have got money back.
And I, I think I suggested this a year ago, we need to look into tapping into that bond. Particularly with this contractor being out of business.
But don't we run into the problem that this, this was a state project and it wasn't us?
We had nothing. It's not a state business.
Well, that contractor had to have insurance and stuff during, wouldn't you have had that insurance?
Sure, he was a lot of trouble.
Well, if he was insured during that time, his insurance has to pay up.
We're a third-party beneficiary in that contract. We're a third-party beneficiary of any contract between the state and them because we were the one intended to receive the beneficiary. We do have standing to sue, if needed. But we do have standing to accomplish people's issues, insurance or bonding.
We can look into it, it seems complicated.
Wow, what's it going to cost us to have that fixed though? The railings will fall out. Walk over and look, it'll fall out. The last time they fought out a level on our handicap ramps, when a railing falls out and they put weight on them.
The other way is we've already got, where the poster up for the railing, it's already busted out again.
You can see the chunks.
So, at what point is it going to come over all the way over?
Exactly, that's my point exactly.
It's bad.
What's going to happen where it's going to block it all, because it's going to be you. Or you cannot repair that. I mean, I think Ray agreed with it.
No, we, yeah.
You cannot repair that kind of, that kind of total weather.
What they've done, they come in there, what they've done is they come in there and tried to drill it and tried to put a few pieces of rebar in it and then tried to form back out and it all went on. It had to be taken back off and poured in.
Yep.
So, that's, I mean, that's, that's the big thing.
But what is our, this, are we asking our attorney to look at the legalities of this thing? Can we do that, just to see if we have any?
Well, I think we need to, the state, I want to, the state person, I want to go.
At least she advised us that we do agree, if there is anything we can do, if there is fines, if there is a delay there.
I, I would like to suggest that maybe get someone to come in, get us an estimate and fix it properly.
Well, I thought the person, both do that. That's what we were last told, it was a day, was going to have someone come in, another contractor, to look at that and give us some estimate on what, what it would cost.
When I talked to Mr., I talked to, he suggested we find another contractor, I'm like.
I thought he was doing it.
That's what I kind of like, we find another contractor?
Six months ago, a year ago. You better write that down, Dave.
We do have, I've talked about the chiller had been installed and the issue we had is, anyway. During the chiller installation, we were able to get this out. And when we bit it out, I had a lot of people send me, oh, I could put this in for $40,000 or some Ohio bank. But when we bit it out, we bit it out, we got it installed for $17,400, about $23,000, I'm saying, by getting it out. I'm, I'm a big believer in the bidding process, get it out and get the best price that we possibly get. So, that's what I'm going to be doing a lot of. I've created a preferred contractors list. What I've done is I went to all the contractors and I said, this is Lincoln County, what can you do for us? What price are you going to charge them? So, I have a complete list of several contractors that we've haven't used before, who've given us some pretty good rates. And I myself know if I call a contractor, I know what I'm paying, what fees I've got. I don't have to worry about it when the invoice comes in, I'm like, well, what's this? So, I know it right up front when I, when I contact. One of the things I've noticed that I've, I've really, I really, gets to me is when, there are times when we call a contractor out, it seems like sometimes contractors want to, I don't know, they want to camp out here in Lincoln County. And one of the things I'm, I'm saying is that after eight hours, if I call you out to come and work on a chiller or I call you up to come and work on a boiler, after eight hours, if you don't know what it takes to fix it, you probably don't know. So, why are you billing me for 40 hours and then coming back and saying to me that you couldn't fix it? So, at the end of eight hours, you give me a bid on what it takes to fix it, an estimate. We're not paying you past the eight hours. If I call you up today, you have eight hours, and an eight-hour period, if you can't fix it, I need to know why you can't fix it. And then we'll go from there and get out anything we have to do. That's pretty much what I've got, it's, we had a lot of things that we accomplished this summer, I was very pleased with it. A lot of concerns, the sewer plants really concerned me. Roofs, those are all issues that concern me quite a bit, so.
Ray, you mentioned you had a threat, I'm like, what, a threat?
The threat? Oh, was it one that, we just talked about?
Yeah, that's, that's the same one, I mean.
Oh, what we've done is that, I've, I've been talking and I did even have some input from Mr. Curry about it, different things. We go to these schools and we go to lights and do lighting, do all these things. I know at the high school, we, when we replace, when we replace the lights, we were waiting so long, it was burning up the ballast. The ballast is $500 to $600 per ballast. We have 17 ballasts that you replace. We've spent over $30,000 on just ballast, replacing it. Had we went and replaced the bulb, the way these bulbs were, is they'll start flashing going on and off. And when they start flashing, they need replaced. So, when it goes back on, it's a starter and a relay that's trying to start that light back up and it burns the relay up and it burns your ballast up. So, what we've done is, I went around and I, one of the things on a boom truck, we've got a boom truck that we're going to purchase. We were able to, it was on eBay, who's going back for this from Snyder, Texas. They're going to ship it to us. They're actually going to, it was 14.5 is what they wanted, we got it for 10. Very well pleased with that and make our work. If we have to work around buildings now, if we have to go up on a roof or before we had to call somebody in our contractor to take a compressor up on the roof to replace, we can do that now. It has a jib on it that, that's rated for 2,000 pounds. And we're able to lift things up on it and make the work easier and more efficient to where we can do more in one day without having to worry about scaffolding and things like that and ladders, working on that. So, we're pleased with that too, we've got a pretty good deal on that.
Mr. Mick, are you going to speak today about the MIP projects and all those things?
It's okay, let's just, let's talk into that because it does, you know, we, obviously, we have a great number of needs.
Are you going to begin by, the roof projects, I mean, I can just refresh our memory.
The, the MIPs are the smaller projects, but, you know, last year, we went after the funding for the project at West Hamlin Elementary School. We were asking for a million dollars, that's the maximum that you can ask for in an MIP. The needs projects, those, those are the larger projects. That, that's what you're looking to build a new school or consolidate schools. And, and the timeline for submission of those types of projects is, is in October. You know, it'd be my recommendation, based upon what we've heard here today, as well as my conversations with the School Building Authority and the State Department. It looks like in order for us to even be able to consider such a project, you know, we would have to come up with 20% or more match in funding. You're looking at 1.5 to $2 million, that it would be, which probably would require, you know, the board to get a CUSAC loan. Now, according to Mr. Ashley, SBA, there's limited money available this year for, for loans. And it's, and from what he is hearing, the discussion there at the School Building Authority, is that most of that money, what is available, is going to end up going to these flood ravage counties. Canal, Nicklaus, Oklahoma County, I think it was another county, Greenbrier County. He named several counties that he knows is going after this funding. That, that's not going to make that an option for us right now. And, you know, you mentioned Fayette County, the fact that what they do have available to give away this year, looks like Fayette County is in line to receive a big chunk of it. So, basically, from what I know, what I've been told, you know, I, I just don't see us moving forward right now with a major need project.
Okay, so our two projects are the Gann Valley, West Hamlin School and then the Duval Midway, right? Both of those are, we call it costly, millions of dollars.
Several millions of dollars.
And we'd have to provide 20% of it.
I know, we, we're told that that's not the case, but when you look to see how that money's been handed out recently, that expectation is there that counties be able to come up with some matching funds. And I, you know, and Mr. Ashley mentioned it the other day, like, he talked about Wood County. And Wood County's already been promised $10 million if they pass a bond. So, they're getting ready to run a bond, refering to Wood County with a commitment that if there's a session with SBA, is going to give them a refund.
Much what they get is getting off the legislature.
Mr. Ashley communicated, Dave Ferguson said this to me too, I, I guess there's going to be a request in the legislature and the government because they don't feel like there's enough money to go around with what's happening with flooding issues this, in June. They're going to ask the legislature and the governor to use some rainy day classes to help offset some of the, some of the costs. So, I, you know, who knows with that, there will be. Obviously, what financial resources are available in the states. A lot of people have right now, have their hands out there and are in great need.
So, this will be, each project would have to be submitted by a code, but it doesn't look quite that to me, each one, this is for us. When you break up the Duval sewer plant, do we need one size within our narrow?
No, we actually went down on the size, it was 18,000 gallons. Where I looked at, I had them pull up all the water usage in life, 6,800 was the most water that was in the previous plant. And we've dropped it down to 10,000, like, so we're able to, I didn't even ask the price of 18,000. I just, 10,000 replacement to bring it down. It was way too big for what they had now, so.
So, they need to replace completely, in years, but I don't know when they are.
And that's, and that's where you get into the EPA and you get into the D and P, all these permissions that you need to do that, have to be, all importance for that. My, like I said, my concern with Duval right now is, is, is bad, really bad.
Would it necessarily have to be at the exact same location?
No, it doesn't have to, but you have to use that leach bed. We just replaced the leach bed this summer, we paid $12,000 and had all that redone because it was so bad. But we don't have to do that, if we open a new plant, the leach bed will satisfy a new plant. We can put on any site as long as it stays where the leach bed can connect to it.
So, would there be any substantial cost savings in terms of leaving the old plant where it sits, installing a new plant adjacent to it?
I think that, well, we, we have to remove it.
Afraid of that happen?
Yeah, the EPA, you have to remove it. We have to have a permeate in place to replace it and then part of that process is you have to take down.
Sort of like your old place to gasoline, sort of like that?
Yes, exactly, exactly. Take it down, set it for a while and you have a disposal, but not for the.
Now, a big problem, a big problem is you can't come and build it in a day's time.
You're, you're looking at summer, someone.
Yeah, I'd drive it, but I mean, if it goes down, cool time, we're going to pay the lease to build it.
Oh, yeah.
I wonder, Greg, if we can get a better price if we were looking at multiple, you know, let's say Duval and Midway, utilizing those sewer treatment plants.
This company takes care of all those. I, I tried to, I asked him both ways on that and he, it was about the same on, on both of them, the price and the budget. If you look at, the biggest thing is that when you get into that is the labor involved with it and all the permits involved with it too. If you look at, the bigger thing is that when you get into that is the labor involved with it and all the permit involved with it. And then finding that type of plant is not something you go out and, they pretty much manufacture that for you. I have options. I'm going to, I've talked with Mr. Ferguson about trying to get ahold of some other people that give some additional estimate. That was just the initial estimate. I've got plans to get more estimates on some other companies. The companies that do this are not, they know you need it. It's really not, not somebody that's really willing to work with you to, you got to have it.
I noticed that the counties that have received funding, and we're applying, the cost for those sewer treatment plants was just around three hundred thousand dollars a piece. I was wondering if that's because maybe they had more than one to replace and they're bringing the price down.
I know, I know, Mr. Ashley, we talked about that, about awarding last year. I think it was the Wood County, who was it?
Mason County.
Mason County, I think I got two of them or three of them. You know, he was, she was kind of surprised that they even got the sewer plant. We can, we try to, I'll try it either way. I'm going to try it the way that I can try and get the price down right now.
There's no way you can win our price at all.
There's just so much sediment and stuff in there. You go in there digging, you get down too far, you may even knock it out. Part of the sediment is actually trying to hold the wall. But what it says that it comes out and you have to notify the EPA and all that, that's fail.
We've had two CUSACs in burn, which we're still paying now. Those will be paid off. One is in two thousand twenty. I believe the other one was two thousand twenty-one. Those will be paid, probably, right?
But it didn't sound very optimistic. They weren't very optimistic if you can get those in.
Mr. Ashley said he knew that five hundred thousand dollars, that CUSAC money that's available right now, he knows it's going to run.
The CUSAC loans, is that, that's federal funding, so it's not necessarily, the state can't necessarily just generate that, that we'll...
That's right.
So if they're betting on the federal money, it's going to be provided to do it, so. And we got these roofs. But I, you know, what I'm thinking of here is, and everybody else, the idea of our two great, big school needs on each side of the county. We have school needs, major needs, but the funding for those does not look like it's going to be there in the foreseeable future. And for us to be able to provide twenty percent of...
That's right.
So, because we've always been reluctant to dive into these sewer plants and all, thinking, well, hey, you're going to invest half a million dollars and then you're going to come out and close this school, right? But it looks like we're going to have to, in the next few months, make a decision how we're going to go with that. Hopefully, we may, hopefully not be forced to, but have to go ahead and do that. It's a question of...
What you see is what I see.
I mean, I would love to think that we were going to be able to address these two school needs, but I don't know how. For certain, I don't think we're going to have a bond issue. I've had success in the past, and I would be...
I know I talked with, with Mike Paul, the SBA, about Gann Valley. Gann Valley's roof was really bad. And I know Dana had it scheduled for the front part to be replaced, and that hasn't been done. Still waiting on funding from the SBA. But Mike related to me, he thought that they, they didn't want to put five hundred thousand selling Gann Valley. My thought back to him was that, well, we still have students here, what are we supposed to do with students? I mean, you still have to provide roofs, you have to provide things for them. So he wanted me to have an alternate plan. I don't know what type of alternate plan we can do. It needs a roof. There's no alternate plan to that. It has to have a roof.
Maybe what you'll be able to do here in the next couple of months or so is provide us estimates on the sewer plants that may be upgraded. And then roof prices.
I hope, like I said, inspections coming out right now, blame all that.
And if you could prioritize those for us, then at that point, we can look in and then kind of make a decision. If we want to submit an MIP project.
What do those have, eight or eight?
Just submit one then. But if we have a better feel where our total needs are, then we may have the, from this time. Mental thinking here, it looks like our needs are greater than...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything about that topic? Thank you. Mr. Guy, keep up the good work. Okay, next on our presidential boards, Mr. Mick, on the athletic field construction bids and planning.
So, you know, we did receive our deals. Was that, we, last week's meeting, we seemed to be, and I've got them all done together now, recently.
Last week, it was... That's the email I got, the twenty-third.
And I would request that we have the executive session to discuss those deals.
Okay, let me interject here. We did have three bids. We've gotten those. But as you know, we're still contemplating awarding a contract. And there is a provision in code, which in code six dash nine A dash four, subsection B nine, that prevents us to talk about specifics of contracts due to the sensitivity of what's being dealt with. So Mick is asked to act as what's played with the board. Have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. You're going to executive session?
Same.
Seconded by Mr. Wilkinson. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.